Good morning, we would like to welcome you to the January 28th Board of Supervisors meeting. Do you please stand with me and we will be led in the Pledge of Allegiance by Supervisor Vanderpoel and remain standing for a moment of silence.
Ready?
Salute.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice
Thank you. Well, we will start this morning off with Board of Supervisor Matt. We'll start at the end with Supervisor Innes.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, tomorrow morning I will start out about 6:30 at the Breakfast Rotary Club in Springville as their speaker and then I will come to Visalia at 10 o'clock for the Indian Gaming Special Benefit Committee meeting. We have about $278,000 in that fund this year to be distributed through grants, so looking forward to getting that out. Then I'll be going to Porterville for the gang poster award winners. It's going to be held at the library. We wanted to have a lot of extra room, so we'll be doing that at noon and then the winner of that contest poster will be on one of the city transit buses driving around town, so it's kind of a neat deal for the kids. And at 3 o'clock I'll go to Alta Vista School where we're going to have the unveiling of their new book machine, library book machine, which has been much needed. We used to use the old mobile book mobiles that went around, but this way the teachers can instruct the library on the books and stuff they want to have in the machine and then the kids can just check them out with their county library card, so it's quite a deal. And following that I will go to the Sheltered Workshop is having an open house starting at 3, so I'll get there right after I get out of the book machine. So that's pretty much what I have.
Supervisor Sheen.
Okay, last Tuesday I attended the California Freight Advisory Committee meeting in Sacramento and the meeting was about our response to the National Freight Movement Program they're putting together and I expect by the end of this year California's freight movement program will be completed. On Wednesday I attended a meeting of the Rural County Supervisors and that was also held in Sacramento and our main topic was marijuana. How do the different counties deal with ordinances on marijuana? I think what it boils down to is that each county is going to determine their own ordinances so it'd be up to the individual counties. We do not want the state of California stepping in and have a blanket ordinance on the distribution and growing of marijuana. Yesterday, then on Friday, I attended the San Joaquin Valley Joint Powers Meeting in Stockton and that is the group that's taking over Amtrak. So we're represented by the eight valley counties and three at-large members and everything looks smooth. The fare box of the Central Valley portion of Amtrak is probably one of the highest in the nation. It's like 58% is recovered from fees, from tickets and it looks, they're going to add another train, which will be what you call comet cars and that's the cars you have to step up into to get on the main floor. The problem with the comet cars, we're experiencing some problems that people with panty caps or a lot of luggage have to walk a couple steps up to get to their seats. But we're told that these cars are only temporary and as soon as new cars become available at some time we'll be allocated the new cars that we can walk straight into your seats. Yesterday evening I attended a Forest Service meeting in Fresno and what the Forest Service is doing is they're going to do three forest plans simultaneously and that's going to be the Sierra Forest, the Sequoia Forest, and the Indio Forest. So there's a great emphasis on recreation. I think the Forest Service understands that the forest is underserving the people that surround the national forests. There's 18 forests throughout the country right now that are going through this plan. It has a two-year timeline and the plan should be completed by December 2015. The issue I have with the Forest Service Plan is it sounded really good what they're trying to accomplish. It's the fact that it all depends on funding and the Forest Service has been underfunded for decades and I hope people don't, do not have a credibility problem with the Forest Service because they can't complete their plan, which would be proposed in 2015 because of the lack of funds. So that's something I hope that doesn't disillusion the people who use the forest. There's a meeting tonight in Bakersfield which will specifically cover Sequoia National Forest. Last night was more or less an overview of the process in the Sierra Forest. This Friday there's a meeting at 5 o'clock in Hanford on the water bond, so I'll be attending that meeting this Friday and that's all I have.
Like you've been busy, super hazerworthly.
Traveler. Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Last Tuesday the Tulare County Association of Governments met in Lindsay and we queried the Caltrans representative regarding the 99 project from Kingsburg South to Goshen and that project is behind schedule, we know. The question is how far behind schedule and what's going to be done to get it up to speed. We've got word back just the other day that as of, starting May 1, the contractor will be subjected to liquidated damages of, I think it's like $10,000 a day or something. So hopefully that will be great incentive to move that project forward, but it's taken far longer than was anticipated and it's created an issue obviously for the folks traveling up and down the 99, including Tulare County residents. Last Thursday the Cutler Roasty Chamber of Commerce held their banquet. We were able to honor a number of businesses, individuals, students in that community, a great event, well-attended. And then this coming Friday the board, the Dainuba Chamber of Commerce will be holding their event, will similarly be honoring individuals and businesses in that community. We met last week with the press at Traver. We have an interment in our Paupers Field. We will have an interment of indigent folks, their remains, on the 28th of February. The purpose really is we want to alert people, the family members, if they're looking to claim the remains of their loved ones, they will be able to do that up until the 25th of February at the Kingsburg Cemetery, who holds the cremains until they are interred. So we want to make sure folks are aware of that opportunity. It was a Woodlake Step Up Meeting held on Friday. I was not able to be there, but they have scheduled another Step Up Event in that community and they're very excited about that. I believe that's all I have to report this morning.
Thank you, Supervisor Vanderpoel.
All right, real quick, I just want to congratulate again the award winners at the Tulare Chamber of Commerce Annual Banquet, which was held last Friday. There was a great turnout to honor the businesses and people of the year. The International Agri Center was the large business, the California Office Liquidators was the small business, Dennis Maderos was the man of the year and Joanne Wadi was the woman of the year. So congratulations to all those individuals for all they do for the community. Also, an event that's upcoming this Friday is an event put on by PG&E and it's called the View the Success Luncheon and they will be highlighting a partnership that took place last year between PG&E and the community of Waukina. It was very successful in getting resources to the community. It was very well-attended and sure appreciate the partnership that PG&E has entered into to help lift up these rural unincorporated communities as much as they can. Also, the Kings-Tulare Area Agency on Aging, which I serve on the governing board on, has been very active and busy. There are a few events that are coming up that I wanted everyone to put on their calendar or get involved with if they could. Assembly Member Solis had a representative at yesterday's meeting and he invited everyone to attend an event that's being held on February 28th called the Senior Scam Stopper Event and that's going to be located in Lemoore. And basically that's to inform seniors about all the different scam opportunities or scam plots that people are trying to hurt seniors with out there and so it's, should be a very informative event and I encourage all seniors to attend so that they are not taken advantage of. We know they are very vulnerable. Sorry if I offended any of my colleagues. Also, the Kings-Tulare Area Agency on Aging has an ongoing volunteer recruitment for Medicare counselors that's taking place currently. If anyone is interested in volunteering their time to help attract or help assist seniors go through the Medicare process, that would be really great and definitely a big contribution to the effort that the Kings-Tulare Area Agency on Aging is undertaking. And then lastly, everyone put on your calendar, May 16th for Senior Day in the Park at Mooney Grove. That is an annual event that is put on and it's always very well-attended. It's a great opportunity for seniors to network and also take advantage of various resources that are out there. That's all I have.
Great, thank you. Well, we will move straight to my presentation this morning. I'm glad to see so many departments represented here today and it's great to look back there and see our sheriffs and their Class A's. They look sharp. I see some of our fire folks dressed up too. It's great to have you all here. I hope things I say today will give you some insight into what we're looking forward to as a board this year. And you know, in preparing for this speech over the last two months, and it has been two months, I found myself looking for, you know, where's the news? Five years ago, as I sat here in the same position and giving the State of the County address, I had to make some terrible announcements about having to lay off, you know, hundreds of county employees and gladly we don't find ourselves in that position today. So I'm happy to be able to deliver this information and do so without dread like I did five years ago. Well, there's good news and bad news to share, mostly good. First, I'd like to thank my family for the support they've given me for the last nine years. I'm now in my 10th year as, serving as a supervisor, especially to my wife Connie, who just five years ago, four months into being made the chairman of this board, she was diagnosed with cancer. Our family surrounded us with their support and love to help her through the treatment and she never once pulled back and said, you know what, you need to stay here. She would push me out the door and say, you need to go take care of business, although most of the time she was asleep, so she didn't know I was gone. You know, the community offered its support also. We'll always remember those who left kind notes, offered prayers in our behalf, and here we are today, five years cancer-free. That was for you, Connie. You know, it's a pleasure working with four supervisors who have the best interests of this county in mind. Each of them is sincere in their commitment to their districts and their conviction to serve the citizens of Tulare County. Five years ago I said a little something about each of them. I'm not going to do that this time because they do speak for themselves. I think the citizens see how busy they are out, you know, in the community and working for the best interests of the county. Now, I asked our CEO to provide me with a spreadsheet showing the department heads and the changes that have taken over the last few years and since 2004, with the exception of two, all of the department heads have changed and in several cases we're, you know, I'm experiencing the third and sometimes fourth department head. And we even created two new departments last year and our IT and Fire Departments are still relatively young, even though the folks are a little older, the Fire Department itself is young. I sent out an email asking each department head to provide a list of their successes from 2013 and what their goals are for 2014, so I'd like to take a few moments and talk about some of those. I don't have time to do them all. This is not going to be a lengthy speech, but I want to share some of them. You know, 2013, our Sheriff's Department, hand in hand with Code Enforcement County Council, hammered illegal marijuana grows in this county and I borrow the "hammered" from Supervisor Innes down there, who that seems to be his favorite statement, we're going to hammer them. And we really did hammer them. So our hat goes off to the hard work they did, lots of overtime. I know these guys were out there till the wee hours in the morning in the middle of the hottest parts of the summer, taking out these marijuana grows and we appreciate their hard work, so our hat goes off to them. This year, wow, there's not much to think about. This year the goal is to work hard on the jails that we've received grant funding for. 500, approximately 500 new beds will be provided in this county. We have a new jail in Porterville that's underway. The plans are underway, we'll be breaking ground on that, I hope, soon. We have a jail with a reentry training classrooms at Sequoia Field that is underway as well. This represents $110 million in construction projects in Tulare County just for the Sheriff's Department alone and I'm sure he's got another five or eight million dollars of stuff he'd like to build, but he's going to have to wait. Our Fire Department replaced its entire line of breathing apparatus, improving the safety for our firefighters and they continue to work also with the sheriff on co-locating with a single dispatch center, which will provide cost savings and efficiencies to the county as well as both departments. Our Resource Management Agency this year processed $79 million in solar projects. $79 million. We're reaching history levels here for construction permits in Tulare County. They also completed several major road projects in the county and currently are working on several bridge projects. They came to us with a proposal to work on, I believe, 21 different bridges. Now, we might not see these bridges being built this year, but a lot of the preliminary work is being done, design work is being done and there are several bridges that will be worked on in the near future. And there's too many employees in that department to mention by name because they've all been instrumental on working together as team. Their team effort has been exceptional. Our Health and Human Service Agency last year partnered with our local hospitals and other healthcare providers on what we call the LIP, but the Low Income Health Program. This has helped thousands of Tulare County citizens and they've benefited because of their hard work. This last year also they moved into a brand-new building on Tulare Avenue here in Visalia for the Mental Health and Drug and Alcohol Programs, which I think is a clear statement from this board that we care about our employees also and the conditions that they work in. We wanted to see those folks have a building that they could be proud of and provide services close to our clients. As we approach this year, the same team is working on, pretty much around the clock, and enrolling all eligible residents in the Affordable Care Act program. So regardless of how you feel about the Affordable Care Act, it is here and we have a team working on that. Our County Council has another, had another successful training session for the many special districts in Tulare County. I'm told we now have had Government 101, 102, 103, 104, and 105. And I can tell you personally, I have seen special districts using the manuals that they received with that training and this year for them it was short, it's all about succession planning. Based on a recommendation from our First Leadership Academy graduates, the Human Resource Department sponsored a very successful employment empowerment symposium, but say that three times fast. They did that last year providing valuable training for hundreds of county employees and now is working on a wellness program that we hope that will spread county-wide and we feel that healthy employees are happy employees. Our Probation Department, wow, what can I say about them? And we have a new leader who has handed huge responsibility with the passing of AB 109. Chief Meyer has led our local team of law enforcement through a very tough year managing new funding and a lot of pressure to provide new programming. She's done a wonderful job and over the horizon is her vision and others for a much-needed vocational training program in our youth facility. I called it her youth facility, but today I'll say it's ours. The plans for a new training building are in the works right now. She cares about these young people who have been entrusted to her, even though they don't know where they might be in the next year or two, she has plans for their future and wants to help them realize that they do have a future in their life. I'd like to take a few moments to talk about our board representatives now. We have two exceptional board representatives that are just wonderful to work with. Julieta Martinez has been working on the board's Good Work Funds since she was hired with us. She does a wonderful job. Having a bilingual person on the board has helped tremendously in many occasions. It's been wonderful to have her in our office. She has a wonderful personality, which comes across on the phone, and she also prepares the majority of the proclamations and certificates that this board presents and I can tell you, she always is doing her best to make sure they're completely accurate and complete and I have seen her on the phone many times saying, I just need more information, this isn't enough. I want this to sound good. Allison Pierce has taken the Tulare County Gang Prevention Task Force to new levels. When I requested information from all the department heads, each department head handed over, you know, one or two pages. Allison, I think, gave me 20 to 25 pages worth of information on the Step Up Program. And not only is she surpassing our expectations with the many Step Up Programs that she oversees, but she has an attitude to go along with that. She brings an excellent attitude and a wonderful spirit with her to work each day and it's contagious. Sitting in the office next to her, just to hear her answer the phone makes you feel like you're having a wonderful day. The Step Up Program includes several services we provide for the youth of Tulare County. Last year the Loop Bus provided rides to over 17,500 youth to after-school programming. This represents a over 50% increase from the previous year. Our Summer Night Lights Program more than doubled with over 12,000 attending events last year. We've now reached over the 100,000 mark with Tulare County citizens who have been touched by the Step Up Programming since we began in 2007. Looking forward to this year beyond, there are a few areas that have requested programming in their area, Strathmore being one of those areas. CSAT's now working with 30 Visalia Unified School District students on the LEED Program sponsored by Step Up. This program is training high school students to be mentors and leaders in their schools. The City of Porterville has led the way with their commitment to the young people by taking the Step Up message to their neighborhoods on smaller summits. We'll continue to work with our partners in the Health and Human Service Department to direct funding in a more focused way to some of these troubled teens and families and are very appreciative of their willingness to work with us and partner with us on the many programs that we're doing. Now, the people who work in this office here in this building where we're at today are absolutely wonderful to work with. I'm constantly amazed at the amount of work that gets done each day. Our CEO, Gene Russo, has been a great addition to the county family. He's listened to and followed the direction of the Board of Supervisors and is leading the charge as we rebuild our way out of the recession. His knowledge of government financing and his conservative nature have been a tremendous help to the citizens and to us as a board. He has assisted also in the oversight of the Retirement Fund, which has seen great growth during the last few years. There's truly been a wonderful recovery. Each day before I attend the Retirement Board Meetings, Gene comes to my office and pretty much pounds on my desk and gives me directions and they've been wonderful directions to follow. This is just a small sampling of the many success stories that were shared by our department heads over the last month. There's so much more to tell. Now I'd like to take a few moments and continue to talk about what the successes we had last year and continue to build on them this year and for the future. With the support of this board, we will continue to have our nighttime meetings in each district again this year. It was very successful. Last year we had many citizens come out, which provided them access to their supervisors in their community after hours, so we'll continue to do that. We'll also continue and plan to meet with our Indian Tribal Council this year. During our meeting last year, we were able to open up communication lines that for years did not exist and we now have a relationship with the tribe that we can pick up the phone and talk to their director. We can talk directly to the chairman of their council, so that it's been a wonderful example of reaching out and expanding our reach within the county. At the end of last year, this board held a retreat in Three Rivers. It was published, it was noticed, correct, County Council?
Correct.
We made sure everybody knew about it and at that retreat, we were able to work on our relationships that actually had deteriorated over the last few years. We worked together to realize a common vision and discuss goals for the future of Tulare County. This year, we will include our department heads in a retreat. Staff has been asked to contact each department head soon and plan a meeting that we will have that will kick off and start us into this new year. We'd like to work with our department heads on their needs that they have in their departments at this time and looking forward to planning in the future. And part of that discussion I'm sure is going to include each department's needs for office space. We continue to have several departments that need additional office space, they're growing, they need to move, they need bigger, we'd like to see them in the best quality office space that can be provided. And most of you know, the Office of Education has given us notice that they will vacate the two buildings that they lease from us on our county campus here, the middle of next year and I am sure each and every one of the department heads in this room has already made plans, they've already taken a tape measure over those buildings and measured and figured out where their office is going to be. Well, I can tell you, you can stop making plans, that this board will work together to determine who will be the receiver of those two new buildings. So stop making plans, really. And we're looking forward to, in this retreat, connecting with the department heads. We don't get to do that very often. We don't get to sit down in a room together and talk about the needs and talk about the future, so we look forward to that and we think this will serve the needs of the county for many years to come. And we all know that we're experiencing the worst water conditions in recorded history. Our citrus industry has suffered a one-two blow with the freeze and now a pest that is spreading county-wide. We have also great concerns for our farming, cattle, and all of our agriculture industry that is the backbone of Tulare County. I talked with Neil Pilliard, who's the Director of our Parks, yesterday and Neil is already working on water-saving measures. The county will lead the way when it comes to water conservation. He, without having been directed, has already made immediate plans to cut back our water consumption as a county. Now, we would, so starting immediately, the lawns and planters will receive minimal watering and trees will receive the watering they need, especially the young trees, and make sure we maintain them and don't lose them. So we ask the public to bear with us as they see our lawns go brown, as they see reduced plantings in our planters. It's going to be a plan and it is planned. We want to save as much water as we can. Now Neil has assured me that most of our Now, Neil has assured me that most of our grass is common Bermuda. And that next year or the year after, when we turn the water back on, it will green right back up as though it had always been watered. So please bear with us and because our lawns will be brown. We're going to do our part as a county to free up as much water as we can to help out our farmers. And we ask others to do the same. We, as a board, have recognized that there's a great need to invest more in our employees and provide training that will help them become the leaders that we know they can be. While I was a contractor with a sheet metal shop, I never would have considered putting an untrained person on a machine that cut and bent steel. For me, having done that, that would have been very dangerous and had a direct straight line to the emergency room here in Visalia. And we're committed to work with our HR department and provide the resources to give our employees the best training we can. We want to see supervisors trained to be supervisors. So we are going to work hand-in-hand with our HR department to make sure this is done. This has been a common goal of ours for the last couple of years and there have been some changes made and there will be more. Now, there have been times in our country's history, in our country, not our county, but in our country, when we stood shoulder to shoulder to fight with and for each other, when we were attacked from the outside, when the Nazis threatened the world. Our fathers and grandfathers went to war, side by side, regardless of color, status, or religion. Our mothers and grandmothers, they stayed home and took up the slack. Together with other countries, we stood together and fought and won. The state of California is under attack. This enemy knows no color, status, or religion. Our common enemy is the drought. This Sunday, the leaders of the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints is asking the members of their church statewide, which I am one, to join in and fast and pray for rain. So I extend the challenge to all those that are within the sound of my voice to join with us and fast and pray for rain this Sunday. And we have an opportunity to, again, stand shoulder to shoulder regardless of color, status, or religion with a common goal, and that's to petition God to help our land. Now, Gene, this morning reminded me that Sunday is Super Bowl Sunday. So my response to that is you can fast in the morning. Now, I hope that a few of the takeaways from what I've had to say today is that the county of Tulare is in good financial shape. We have a healthy retirement fund, we care about our employees and their working conditions, we are a people of faith. We have a good, solid plans for the future and are dedicated to the citizens of this great county. Thank you. Okay, we will continue with our meeting, we're not going to take a break. We'll continue with our meeting, item number three, which is a presentation by Woody Smek regarding the Sequoia Canyon National Parks.
Well, good morning, members of the board, Mr. Chairman, thank you for this time to address you. Again, my name is Woody Smek. I'm the Superintendent of Sequoia and Kings Canyon National Parks. I'm the thirty-ninth Superintendent appointed to serve these parks since eighteen ninety. And I'm the first native Central Valley resident to serve in this post. I was born and raised in Bakersfield, lived for a while in Lindsay, went to school at Cal Poly. And like many Valley residents, I spent my summers up in the mountains, hunting, hiking, fishing, backpacking, riding stock, and just fell in love with the beauty of this area. And it's part of that experience is what attracted me to this career. One of my immediate priorities as Superintendent is to increase tourism to the parks. My goal is to create an opportunity for people to fall in love with these parks and with this region the way I did growing up. To support that effort, we have two new studies that have been published. These are peer-reviewed studies. One is a study of, is a visitor survey for two thousand and twelve. The other is an economic generation report on visitor spending. You have executive summaries of those reports in front of you and for the public here today, there's copies to my left on the table. I want to highlight a couple of key findings from those studies. First, Sequoia and Kings Canyon National Parks received one point seven million visitors in two thousand and twelve. That's a slight increase over the previous year of one point six. It's a good positive direction and I think we can do better and I'll talk about that in just a minute. Of that visitation, seventy-nine percent was domestic, from all states throughout the country. However, seventy-three percent was from California and the majority of that from the greater Los Angeles area. A lot of local visitation as well. Twenty-one percent of that total visitation number was international and visitors came from eighteen countries. The top two countries were Germany and France, though we're seeing higher increases from Asian countries. And we expect visitation from China and particularly grow substantially over the next six years. These visitors spent a hundred and twenty-two million dollars in our local economy within an eighty-mile radius of the two parks. The majority of that spending occurred right here in Tulare County. Forty-seven million was spent on lodging, motels, hotels, RV parks. Eighteen million was spent in our restaurants and sixteen million on gas and oil, something you wouldn't necessarily think about for visitor spending, but substantial expenditure there. This spending, along with the payroll of the National Park Service, contributed to two thousand one hundred and fifteen jobs here in the county. And these numbers are for two thousand and twelve. I think we can do, we can improve on these numbers. And I'm committed to increasing tourism, to promoting these parks and the wonderful opportunities to come and visit. I want our visitors and the public to feel ownership in these parks, these are public lands, they belong to all of us. And their future depends on all of us being stewards of these great places. We, this year, are going to embark on creating a marketing plan. It will be one of the first national parks in the country to have a marketing plan. And I will be working very closely with Eric Coyne and our tourism bureaus and our chambers to create that plan. So it's a collaborative effort where we co-brand our identities and welcome visitors to the parks and to the region. One item for your calendar, just in closing here, next September twenty-fifth will be the one hundred and twenty-fifth anniversary of the creation of Sequoia National Park. It's created in eighteen ninety, it's the second national park created, Yellowstone being the first. And so we look forward to celebrating that event. It's a national treasure, these two national parks that we have here, and I think contribute substantially to the quality of life in our community. So with that, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman, Woody, I just love that first name, that's why I had to say it. I had the pleasure of meeting you when we were up, met up in the National Forest a while back, National Park rather. And I wanted to just let you know that we find, I find, as our family, that the National Park is a wonderful outing, not only for our family, but it's a wonderful place when we have people come to visit us who have never seen giant sequoias. And it's just, I never tire of listening to the ahs and oohs as they come around a corner and they see a, you know, what is a relatively small giant sequoia, but in their minds, the largest thing they've ever seen growing. It is a tremendous opportunity and it's so close. I mean, we can be, from where we live, we can be in the National Park in an hour's driving time. And right there by General Grant and all these wonderful trees to see. And I have to tell you, just a real quick story, it's kind of funny, we had, we had a lady gal who was an exchange student, she was from Thailand. And I asked her, she was living with a family friend of ours, said, have you been up seeing a giant sequoia? And she says, oh, yes, she says, I don't understand Americans, they like to watch trees grow. But that, that exception aside, everybody I've ever taken up there, you know, they just are absolutely astounded by what they see. And I would just encourage you, I think you're right, more can be done. We have sometimes been a little bit frustrated by trying to find food, lodging, and so forth because of limited hours and operations and so forth in the park. And I, I think there are more opportunities. When you go to larger, well, like Yosemite and National Park, you have a lot of gateway resorts and so forth. We really don't have that here, which provides an opportunity for us in our county. Like, I think that Dinuba is really kind of a gateway community from people coming from southern part of California as you're going to Hume Lake or they're going to Kings Canyon National Park. A lot of buses come through there and visitors. And so there's opportunities, I think, even in the Valley floor here. Visalia, of course, has done a great job of their projects of transporting people and providing housing and so forth. But anyway, thank you for being here this morning and we certainly want to work with you to make your program more successful because obviously we will all benefit from that. Thanks.
Thank you. I look forward to working with all of you on this.
Pfizer Sheena.
I also like to thank you, and I like to thank particularly Dana for being a very important part of our tourism effort when we go on these different tourist shows. L.A., Long Beach, and the Bay Area. But I think the most impressive thing I've seen, not only from the Park Service, but from the Forest Service, twenty years ago, the employees of the park weren't very well-received because of the protection aspect of the philosophy of managing the parks. And I see now, including the forest, that we finally have people who understand the need that the people are underserved with access to the park and to the National Forest. And that's been a tremendous turnaround and it's also been a tremendous PR turnaround for the employees of particularly the park. The one thing that came out in our meeting yesterday evening is that our tourists are different than they used to be, than us Medicare people.
Speak for yourself.
The Medicare people wanted to do the camping, they're more outdoors type. The tourists of the generations now are looking for more development. They want easy access, they want amenities. And where before, when we went to the mountains, we were in the mountains, but now they want hotels, they want retail. And the whole market's changed. And I appreciate that the federal government's recognizing that. And I also appreciate, again, the fact that we've come to realize that we have a tremendous opportunity in our forests, in our parks, for our residents to take advantage of because they do own those properties. The one thing, when I travel and I get asked every week, when I'm out of town, like in Sacramento, where are you from? And I say Tulare County, and they get a blank look on their face. And I say, you know, Sequoia National Park. And, oh, the lights go on and they all know where Tulare County is because of the park. You are the landmark of this county. And thank you for your efforts and I really appreciate also how well the park has managed its land. You've done a very good job in land and forest remanagement, so thank you.
Pfizer Sheena, you forgot to mention they want Wi-Fi as well.
True, and we're working on that, right?
We are, we are looking at Wi-Fi hotspots in the park to accommodate visitors. They do want access to digital information and they want it real-time and we're trying to address that as well. And I appreciate the comment on the importance of the brand of Sequoia National Park. I think it does have a strong identity. I think we can deploy it better and do a better job of inviting visitors in. And the comment on underserved residents, I agree with one hundred percent. And I think that's partly, we need to do a better job of promoting and communicating what we have here and how you can access it, how you can use it, what's available to you. So those are in particular areas that I want to focus on and really focus on the off-seasons, the winter, spring, fall. Those are areas that I think are ripe for increasing visitation and will help our, our local businesses as well where we hit a low. I think there's plenty of infrastructure to bring in more people.
When I was in Spain, the television stations had shots of Yosemite. And it was kind of a, kind of a screen like you have on your computer, but I'd like to see us get on that screen too.
General Sherman should be there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have a presentation by Jim Crawl, Mountain Home Demonstration Project.
Morning.
Morning. Is that microphone on, Michelle? Michelle, is that microphone on State Forest? Is that mic on?
Microphone?
Is the mic not on? I hear myself a little.
I could hear him, I didn't think they could.
Testing. I'm the manager at Mountain Home State Forest, I have been for, I'm in my sixth season now, so in July I'll have my six-year anniversary. We're kind of a unique forest. Those of you who don't know, we are about five thousand acres in size, a little less. We surround Balch Park. And if you consider Balch Park the bullseye, we're the next color in the circle. We have a small smattering of private landowners to the west of us in the Happy Camp area. And for the most part, we're primarily surrounded by National Forest land and wilderness, all embedded within the monument, Sequoia National Monument. So I prepared a thirty-minute presentation for you and yesterday, about ten minutes after I finished it, I was informed that I'm going to get ten minutes. So I'm going to blow through a vast number of slides till we get to some of, some of the more aggressive work that we're doing on the forest to protect the sequoia resources, the watershed resources, and the recreational resources, both on Mountain Home and as a benefit also to the county park, okay? If you see any slides that pique your interest, please stop me and we'll discuss it. But, you know, they're, Mountain Home for, since eighteen eighty-three has been known for true multiple-use management. It started with the lumbermen. It's always had the, it's always had the name of Mountain Home because it was one of the few places in California where when the lumbermen and sawmills would make their summer exodus up to the forest, their families would join them because of the intense valley heat. It, you know, you guys well know, it gets hot down here. Our average temperatures up there in the summer are right around seventy to seventy-eight degrees, it's quite nice. It was natural air conditioning. And because of that, some enterprising Tulare County residents back in the late eighteen hundreds built resorts. They built small little communities where the women and children would, would be while their husbands were out cutting timber and milling boards. That started it, right there, this giant sequoia got, got people up there. But really, it was, the giant sequoia was not, was not their primary interest. They came up there for the, for the sugar pine and ponderosa pine. That there is the old Mountain Home Resort, there was a school and a post office. The resort croquet was a common, a common thing. This site is still used by us minus the buildings on the State Forest. It's a day-use area. That there is the Fraser Mill Campground, which currently, that's the Fraser Mill where Fraser Mill Campground currently is. Now, if you're familiar with the campground, the entire E-loop, the bottom loop of the campground, contained that. This here is at the old Enterprise Mill Site when they were making way for the mill. I'm not going to bore you with how it became a state forest, kind of an interesting story. It was, it was basically between the California Department of Forestry and the United States Forest Service, who was, who was going to come to bat first, and we won out. So really, when the State Forest was first, when it was first founded in 1946, the first five or six years, there was a concerted effort to clean up all of the logging residues from the past, from 1883 up till 1946. From what I understand, the first manager got every bulldozer by local contractors and from within the department to come out and bulldoze all of the logging slash into piles, and they had piles burning for five years on the forest. Okay, so what are we doing now? Pretty much, we're maintaining the status quo, but keeping it current with all of the regulation that we faced that our predecessors did not. Our mandate, which is unique to Mountain Home, out of the seven state forests that are operated by CAL FIRE, we are the only one whose primary mandate by legislation is to provide recreation to the public. All of our timber management activities cannot interfere with public recreation. We cannot have an impact, a negative impact, in the long term on hunting, fishing, camping, hiking, sightseeing, whatever. That puts a whole new level of constraint over and above the Forest Practice Rules, SEQA, Clean Water Act, Porter Cologne, all of the other regulation that we have to, that we have to deal with. This is a, this here is actually a picture of the fir-, the first harvest plan that we did under my, under my tenure. Recreation is, is still widespread on the forest. We operate 97 camps, camp sites in five different campgrounds and one group camp. And up till three years ago, that was all on a first-come, first-served, no-fee basis. That was not a model that was working at Mountain Home. It hadn't been for years, but nobody pulled the plug. So, we kind of followed Balch Park's lead, and I did a benefit cost analysis and determined what we consider a fair fee, which essentially covers the, the cost of using the forest. It pays for the toilets, it pays for the toilet paper, the garbage, trash, water testing, you name it. So, as we start to delve into, into the timber process, the forest management process, I just want to be clear that we don't just make a decision to log and cordon off a piece of ground and hire a logger to come up and start cutting whatever trees they, they want to cut. We are subject to layer upon layer upon layer of rule and regulation. I would like to think that my small staff of one and myself do a pretty good job. I think we cover all our bases. That, that really is the fun part of the job. You know, I'm, I'm a registered professional forester and was educated and trained as a dirt forester. I never in a million years, when I was at Humboldt State University, thought I would be managing people. But it's fun. It puts an entirely new spin on forestry, particularly in the, in the realm of multiple use. One of the things that comes with that is, you see there at the bottom, is an evacuation plan. Now, that does not necessarily directly relate to the timber harvest planning process, but it's something that, as a manager, I really need to keep in the forefront of my planning, is what do I do with 3,500 campers in the event of a wildfire? So, a lot of the effort that we have done over the last five years is to create what we're, what we consider a safety zone, somewhere we can shelter our campers and the Balch Park campers in place. Neil and I and some of the local law enforcement with the Forest Service and, and Sheriff and CHP met in 2012 and basically adopted an evacuation plan that my local battalion chief and I put together in the event of an emergency, and overwhelmingly, the way to protect our public is to shelter them at Balch Park. So what have we done to bolster that? I've created a fuel break through a number of different treatments. It essentially surrounds Balch Park on operable ground, places I could put tractors. We have two large ponds there. We can bring three or four strike teams of engines in there if need be. They can put porter pumps in the water, and we can make it rain until the fire is put out. So, I, I think it's a good plan. If the fire's coming from the west, from the Springville area, it would be irresponsible for any of us as managers to send our public down either Bear Creek or Balch Park Road because of the fire act, the fire history in there, which is almost non-existent. It is ready to burn. And if it's going to burn, this may be a good year for it to happen. Not that there's ever a good year, but it's prime and ready to go right now. In the timber harvest planning process, we have to, according to SEQA, we have to do a large number of surveys. Wildlife and botanical are the tricky ones. Archaeology doesn't move, but it does get covered with snow. So we're, typically, we're looking at a, a planned area, treatment area. We're looking at that ground for no less than a year. Our sensitive plants only flower, they're only identifiable by flowers during the spring, and our nesting birds are really only audible when they're nesting in the spring and early summer. So, I can't, I can't do these kinds of surveys in October for a harvest the following season, if that makes sense. Okay. So, I mentioned before, Mountain Home became a state forest in 1946. It was the first one within the system, within, in the department. The inventory work that was done prior to state acquisition demonstrated that there were 92 and a half million board feet of white wood standing, okay? There's a, there's a tremendous amount of giant sequoia out there. That was not considered in, in the, in the inventory, so I'm not even going to mention that as we go through here. I'm not allowed to cut them. We are engaged in aggressive protection of them. So as far as, as far as the state forest system is concerned, those trees that are currently old-growth giant sequoia are going to be managed that way in perpetuity. The only way we ever remove old-growth sequoia lumber from the forest is in the event Mother Nature knocks them down. If they hit the ground, they're fair game. There's other things we want to consider, obviously, but if they're out of sight, away from the public view shed, they're, they're subject to harvest. Between, in the 77 years between state acquisition and today, there have been 118 million board feet harvested from Mountain Home, okay? Our current inventory, as of 2007, was 144 million board feet. So not only in the last 77 years have we logged 118 million feet, we have better than 50 million additional board feet that we have banked in inventory, and this is not giant sequoia, okay? That, we do not receive federal dollars to manage the state forest. We are supposed to be self-sufficient, and I think the model, the, the case management study at Mountain Home really exemplifies what true, how true multiple use can be utilized in a forest setting. In white wood only, we grow about 2 million board feet a year. So, the Southern Sierra. I began my career in Northern California. I thought I saw everything the Sierra Nevada had to offer. Man, was I wrong. This, this country down here is he-man ground. There is no doubt about it. About 30% of what is within the bounds of Mountain Home State Forest is capable of being logged conventionally with tractors. Everything else is too steep. So that very much constrains what we do and where our management footprint is utilized. The thing that concerns me here locally is how far south in the state of California we are and how the, our local infrastructure and sawmill in the state of California has gone away. I mean, you know, we're making every effort we can to protect and bolster California condor populations, okay? They're on the rise, but our sawmill and logging infrastructure is on a, a fast track to extinction. And as a land manager, you know, we are all tasked with, with managing a very dynamic system. I mean, those numbers that I presented before speak for themselves. That ground will grow, will grow a forest with or without the help of us, okay? So do we want to, do we want to manage a fuel-laden forest that is prime for ecological disaster in the event of a wildfire? I would argue not. At least at Mountain Home State Forest, while I'm the manager, I'm going to say unequivocally it's not going to happen, okay? We are trying to reverse the, the trends of past high-grading activities and replace that with more of what I like to refer to as restoration forestry work. We are trying to reduce that number of shade-tolerant trees to protect those who have evolved and adapted to be the main players on that piece of ground. We do a lot of work with reforestation. We're trying a lot of, a lot of different things right now. All of them so far are successful at various levels. We incur a large amount of cost in road management. Here are all the natural, well, these are not all of them, but these are the, the major natural vectors that we have working against us up there on the forest. I can, I can say with a high level of certainty that those dead trees are not at Mountain Home. Those are on some of that land that adjoins us. We do a tremendous amount of research on the forest. We have been a very active player in what's called the Global Climate Change Initiative over the last eight years or so. Academia and, you know, the guys are, are a lot smarter than me. You know, when they're not wearing hard hats, they have propellers on top of their hat. These guys came and did a, we were just, we were just a small player in this, but they are measuring the growing parts of trees. They are measuring every piece from the root system all the way to the very top of that tree. This guy right here is about 260 feet up in the canopy of an old-growth tree at Mountain Home, collecting data to basically do, you know, foresters always tend to look at the forest and board feet. These guys are looking at, at absolute volume by mass. I mean, they're measuring everything, down to the needle. So, I think this is what's going to interest you guys the most. Our fuel reduction activities up there have been sporadic at best throughout the state forest history. I, I did, when I first got there, I rolled out a to-, a topographic map, and we took a long, hard look at how do we separate our, the, the majority of our infrastructure in Mountain Home proper from what we perceive as threats? And that's where all this work started. You know, with 97 campgrounds, we get a lot of visitors every year. I consider every road that we have on that forest to be a high potential for ignition, okay? That's the first thing we did. 52, almost 52 miles of road have been cleared within 100 feet either side of the road to give us some, a defensible fuel profile. We do a lot of tractor piling and burning. These are usually always hinged with timber harvest plans, because we, we as a department cannot afford to go out there and do this or hire it out. So we have the licensed timber operators responsible for doing this work as part of their, as part of their operation. We do utilize our inmate crews to do a lot of hand piling. We can do that. And then either myself and my staff or the inmates will come out and do the burning in the fall, which hasn't really happened yet this year. We were fortunate, a couple of years ago, I applied for some grants by working in concert with the Tulare County Resource Conservation District, which has been a, a very good partner for us as a, as a, as a grant program is concerned. We've been funded both through Proposition 40 and through Proposition 84, through the Sierra Nevada Conservancy. In October, we treated our last acre of 550 acres, better, better than 10% of our, of our ownership footprint, and have applied for an additional 320 acres, another $320,000 that if we're funded, will pretty much get us close to getting all of that tractor ground that we can work on done. Prescribed fire is something that we introduced a couple of years ago. We are using this for a number of objectives. Most people think that we do this to reduce fuel loads, but really, we're doing this for more of, of an ecological restoration. Giant sequoia needs a number of things to regenerate successfully that have not been provided on the state forest, and I would argue probably in most of the land that surrounds us. It needs bare mineral soil, it needs sunshine, and it's one of those trees that is unique in the fact that it, it needs heat, moderate to high-intense heat, into the forest canopy to open what's called a serotinous cone. It will not release its seed without that heat. So that's what we're trying to, that's what we're trying to mimic in our management. This is one of, part of one of our mastication treatments. Same photo point before on the left and after on the right. And this work is being done all over the Pacific Northwest, western states really in general. The thing that we need to keep in mind, though, as managers, is this is only as good as your follow-up treatments. You put a tremendous amount of cost into getting it here. Maintaining this is affordable, but it's often overlooked, and that's the problem with a lot of these grant-funded fuel reduction programs that are being done up and down the state of California. We put a lot of emphasis on education. That's our kiosk at Balch Park. The Sequoia Forestry Challenge. You know, as an industry, and I, I think anybody who's ever worked in the woods would attest to this, is, you know, we, we've always been a profession that has said, you know, "We're trained, we're the scientists, we're the practitioners on the ground, trust us, we know what we're doing," okay? Our adversaries don't necessarily always have the science and the education in the background, but they've been very vocal and they've been very effective in getting their message out to our young people. I've been working with Diane Deely-Neal, who runs the Forestry Challenge for a number of years, and I, I'm proud to say that last year, we had our second event at Mountain Home in Balch Park, and this will continue as long, as long as she and I are around. We take local school kids, big city school kids, people who have never seen a forest in all likelihood, and bring them up and give them three days of training in forestry, give them a, a topic issue, they, and they do a presentation. It's incredible what these kids will take home in three days. Emergency response comes with the badge. We do a lot of it up there. Any questions?
Just, just a, a few comments here. Great, great presentation. You really did a great job of just briefly capturing what Mountain Home really is. You know, we took a trip up there, and like you said, our, our outfits are a little bit different this time, and I'm actually glad I didn't wear this up there, because I would have ruined one of my nice suits, so. But what you have going on at Mountain Home is truly an example that forests throughout the country should follow. That, it's a, it's a 5,000-acre or so jewel in the midst of forests that really isn't managed in the way that you handle it. Not only does it promote tourism and responsible management, but like you said, and you touched on with the Forestry Challenge, you're bringing folks who have just been fed philosophies from textbooks or from, you know, environmental philosophers or something, I don't know. But they're being fed all of this, and they believe it. Until they get that hands-on experience up there and see it, then they really learn what responsible management is. from textbooks or from, um, you know, environmental, uh, philosophers or something, I don't know. But they're being fed all of this and they believe it. Until they get that hands-on experience up there and see it, um, then they really learn what responsible management is all about, and that's what you're doing. Um, and we look at our water situation this year, uh, and, and what Mountain Home really is, is it is preserving a watershed and making sure it doesn't become a water sink. When, when forests are not managed, the, the water just stays up there when it should be flowing down and coming down into the valley. And so for so many ways, this is truly an icon, um, and it really does, uh, it, it really should be, uh, publicized and sold out there because it's a wonderful experience to see that and, and really kudos to you and your one other staff member because you do a real great job up there. Um, and it was a heck of an experience for us to go up there and to see that, and I encourage you to continue and however the county can help partner, I would definitely offer that to you.
Okay. I, I appreciate that. Thanks for the kind words.
Uh, Jim, I, I was sort of the one that instigated the, going up to the forest with the, with the members of this board this last year, and really I was hoping we'd have more of the crowd with us, uh, and this, and the media. I appreciate the fact that you're here today on a day when a lot of folks are here to hear the chairman's presentation, because really the message is one that needs to be gotten out. And I, I, I always remember that it, in your name is the word demonstration forest. And so unlike a national park, which is, is supposed there to preserve and protect something and it more like a, I think of it almost like a taxidermy-type thing, here's a stuffed bear, we're going to protect that stuffed bear. We all know that national, that forest, our dynamic processes, they don't just stay one way. They're, they're constantly evolving. And what I was going to ask you about was, as I was driving up one, Highway 180 the other day into Kings, Sequoia National, uh, Forest and into the national park, because of the drought conditions, I'm seeing a lot of mortality. And you had a picture up there a little bit ago on another hillside of what looked like a bark beetles hitting, uh, pine forest.
Absolutely.
And I saw a lot of that, and so my question is, what kind of mortality are you seeing on, on your demonstration forest compared to what you're seeing on, on your surrounding national forests? Because I think this is the message that has to be gotten out to people. There are lots of good arguments. You, I don't think people understand how much information you presented today. I mean, you covered a lot of stuff. We could have spent minutes in talking about each one of those things. But if we just focus on this issue of mortality and fire, that should be driving, I think, there, there's enough right there to really drive management of our national forest that that's not occurring right now. So if you could just respond, I'd appreciate it.
Yeah, the, the, this is going to be a true test, for sure. Our campgrounds ran out of water last year. It doesn't, the, the prognosis for this year doesn't look any better. It looks exponentially worse right now. Uh, the conditions on the forest right now are May. It's the middle of May right now at 7,000 feet. It's disturbing. We have trees die because of beetle attack every year, but what we experience on the state forest is more of an endemic level of mortality. We haven't reached epidemic proportions. We've been there and we learned our lesson, and we're not going there again. The problem is, is we know how to manage what we have within our boundaries. Bark beetles don't know where those boundaries are. I mean, they, they, they're very good at seeking out trees that are under stress. That's why we try to maintain a healthy forest. When we have a tree succumb to insect attack or they're weakened by disease or blister rust or one of the, you know, or too many campers putting nails and hatchets in them, um, we remove them and we sell them down in Terabella. Uh, they, they pay to remove themselves from the forest. I think that's responsible management. You know, we're, you know, we, we're, we are not, we are, we're not inviting bugs, we're not growing bugs, we're not in the business of doing that. There are plenty of acres elsewhere that they could go and thrive. Uh, I, I try to work close with my neighbors with the Forest Service at Western Divide, and I, I let them know when I see those outbreaks, you know, the ones that are close enough where those, where the beetles can fly in on a good wind. So we're, we're doing what we can. What this is going to do for fire, i- it's obvious. You know, we've got a, we've got an overstocked, over-dense, unhealthy forest. We have trees that are under stress, and now we're taking away what little bit of water they have. And, you know, we're, we're, we are basically giving them the, that, that last little shot of strychnine, uh, so these other critters can come in there and, and finish them off. I think we're going to see widespread mortality in the southern Sierra, actually the entire Sierra Nevada, all up into the Cascades until we start getting into, you know, where the jet stream has been going other than here. You know, they're okay, but California is not looking good this year, and, um, you know, I'm, I'm not giving up. You know, I think winter still has a chance to manifest, but, you know, what, what we do know is without those early snows to begin that snowpack, uh, the snow won't last very long. You know, we're going to need significant cold weather and snow so, just to make things start sticking. It's not looking good. The deepest, the, we measure snow, uh, four months out of the year. We, we operate a snow course for the Department of Water Resources at the old Enterprise Mill Site. Last year, our deepest measurement, we do eight, we do eight samples, uh, on the transect, our deepest measurement was 26 inches. The winter before, it was 126 inches. So it, it's telling, yeah. It's not looking good.
Well, there'll be a bunch of us praying for rain this Sunday.
Yeah, I do that every day.
You know, uh, I, I use the forest right through when we, I go out of the pack station, and I've noticed how well your forest has been managed. I also know how well the park forest is being managed and the Tulare Indian Reservation.
Right.
Uh, the biggest threat to all three entities is the national forest. And we learned that at the rim fire. And, uh...
Rim fire is why I'm not selling logs this summer.
So I, I think the Forest Service, yesterday evening acknowledged that rim fire is going to change some of their thinking, but the biggest threat is the national forest, that everybody up in that, in, in the timber country. I just wanted to acknowledge that, that, uh, federal government needs to realize that and fund the national forest.
Well, I, I, you know, I, I think they do realize it. I, I, actually, to be honest with you, I think they've known it all along. And, um, you know, it, it's, none of, none of those guys, okay, none, none of my neighbors, it's not their fault. You know, they, they, uh, they have policies and procedures that they have basically allowed themselves to be painted into a corner that they can't get out of, um, because of public perception. They allowed public perception to get them where they are now, but I think the, I think the pendulum is going to begin to swim, swing the other way if it hasn't already. Um, and it's going to be the public that is going to demand that they start doing something, and that's coming. But, you know, we, we've heard, we heard that after Angora, and we heard that after every one of these big damaging fires, and as soon as the spring rains come and things green up, people forget. Right now, there's no spring rains.
I think forest, the forest, national forest forgot why they're in the Department of Agriculture. Timber was considered a crop. That's why it's in the Department of Agriculture and not in the Department of Interior like the Park Service is. And I think they need to go back to the American public and they need to realize timber is a crop. It's not something you keep to look at.
I could not agree with you more. And what, what would that do for Tulare County? I mean, you talk about a job creator. It'd be huge.
Mr. Chairman, I'll just keep mine very brief, but I, uh, to look at this forest the way you management is, is outstanding. The key is when you get fires, they stay on the ground. They don't go into the canopy, and that's where you get, you've got more habitat for wildlife. It, I, people need to open their eyes and get up and look at these and see what's, what a well-managed forest can do, uh, not only for the people that enjoy it, get rid of the white thorn, get rid of the stuff that, and get, get some place for the habitat for the animals. A monument area and everything, there's no place for them to go. They've got to go up the roads. They can't get through it so thick. So thank you for all your efforts.
Thank you very much for having me.
Jim, you got your half hour anyways.
Yeah, sorry about that. If, if you, if you haven't guessed already, I, I'm a little bit, uh, um...
You're very talkative for a forester.
Well, I, I, uh, it's my passion. I'm very passionate about it. I'm passionate about that place, and, um, I want to share it with people, so, thank you very much. Come see us this summer.
Thank you very much. Okay, well now move to item number five, which is public comment. Anybody wishing to address the board on an item that is not on today's agenda, limited to three minutes, please come forward, state your name and address for the record.
My name's Walter Townsend. Uh, my address is 1007 North Stephen Avenue, Farmersville. I work for, uh, Tulare County Resource Management Agency at the Central Shop. I'm a heavy equipment mechanic. Uh, we, we lost our union representation in July, and we were supposed to have a vote on which, uh, union that we wanted to come in and, and represent us. Well, uh, that period of time has expired now, and we're still waiting to vote. SEIU has come in, and we really feel like the, the interests of, of the county, of the people of Tulare County and the employees that are in our small bargaining unit would not be very well served by their, uh, representation. And we were trying to get the teamsters to come in, and, uh, we still haven't had any answers. I've got a little petition here, uh, some of the people have signed it, um, in my bargaining unit. I'd like to submit that.
Please give that to the clerk and just get, you know, make you guys aware of the situation.
I, I'm at a loss of where to go from here. The California, uh, Public Employment, uh, Commission has, the Relations Board has ruled that, you know, we should have the election, but now the time has expired. So, you know, we just want you to be aware of that.
Great. Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you for your, for your time.
Good morning. Would your name and address for the record?
My name is Dawn Bliler. My address is 3,000 South La Mesa Court in Visalia. I'm an insurance agent downtown at Lewis and Associates, full-time. The reason I'm here is to respectfully request an extension on the mass burial taking place at Pottersfield on February 28th. I request this in an effort to better inform the next of kin in writing of the plans at Pottersfield with regard to their loved ones, give them a chance to claim their remains, to provide an updated list to the community. As I was researching this, I discovered that the list that is online is not current. There's 32 names that are listed that have been noted as interned, and they are not interned, starting from number 418 on. I believe that the community deserves a chance to claim their loved ones, and also the fees that are being asked to recoup. A loved one is $700 for the cremation expense and a $60 filing fee that Kingsburg Cemetery is asking for. I would like to give the family time to come up with those funds or work with the county on an extension to allow them to repay those funds to the county. And also possibly consider moving some of them to Visalia Cemetery if possible, or another
Have, have you talked with our, our staff, Mr. Chernobylov here?
I did.
Okay. Well, I would direct you to him, and then he will relay that to us.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I might just say something. I, I think, this matter of fees, I think, is something which has just sort of recently come to our attention, and we're, we're looking at that particular issue now. Uh, and what I might suggest to our, you know, just as a possible approach to this would be if there are family members who, uh, would like to, uh, regain the, the cremains of their family members, that they might be identified and held in abeyance until such time if they need to raise funds to do that, but not necessarily stop the process. We've not had an internship now, internship for, since 2006, I believe, Judge, if I'm not, if I'm not incorrect, if that gets correct. We're way past due. We really need to get these people taken care of, uh, and, but I think I'm, I'm very sensitive to your concern. If there's going to, if people are being held up by a money thing, there's no reason why we have to put them in the ground, you know, right away. At least that would be my approach to it. So, thanks for being here this morning.
Thank you very much.
I would, Kirk, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to address the board this time?
Mr. Chairman, if there is no one else, Kathleen Bales, Land County Council. I wanted to introduce to your board two of my new deputies, uh, Marit Erickson, who's going to stand up now. There you go. And Jennifer McNichols. Uh, they've both started in the last month. Uh, they come to us with varying degrees of experience, but quite a bit of enthusiasm, and I'm sure you'll be dealing with both of them in time to come.
No one has told you to run? Thank you very much. Welcome to the family.
Thank you.
Okay, seeing no one else, we'll move to our consent calendar. Uh, there is, has been no request to move anything from the consent calendar for separate consideration. Board, do you, would you like to pull anything? Is there anyone from the public that would like to pull a item from our consent calendar?
Motion to approve consent calendar, Mr. Chairman. Second.
Motion by Supervisor Worley, second by Ennis. Please cast your vote. It is unanimous. Thank you. We'll now move to our time items. We have four public hearings today. Our first public hearing will be item number six, a request from RMA to consider the vacation
Mr. Chairman, uh, board members, CAO, County Council, good morning. My name is Mike Bond. I'm with RMA Public Works Branch, Development Services Division. Uh, the matter before you is, is the public hearing to abandon and vacate a portion of excess right-of-way of State Street in early March. I'll provide a brief overview, uh, answer any questions, uh, before your board will conduct the public hearing. Request for vacation was made by petition. United Healthcare is the owner of Lot 19. The vacation will allow the health clinic to expand and create additional parking for clinic patients. The portion of the right-of-way to be vacated is the west 10 feet of State Street along 19. A 10-foot strip is 125 feet in length and is shown by the crosshatch area in Attachment State Street is typically an 80-foot right-of-way. A 60-foot wide right-of-way is sufficient for current and future vacation, will not affect traffic and will not affect access on State Street. The public, a, a public utility easement will be reserved in existing right-of-way for existing and future public utilities. The proposed vacation is not in conflict with the Tulare County General Plan. Uh, the proceedings were taken, uh, were undertaken pursuant to section, uh, Streets and Highway Code, Section 8300, and following sections. The petition was filed pursuant to Section 8321. Public notice was published and posted pursuant to Sections 8322 and 8323, 8323. The vacation is in conformity with the general plan pursuant to Section 8313, and the public hearing is being conducted pursuant to Section 8324. As stated in the agenda item, uh, the request is that your board, uh, one, conduct a public hearing to consider the vacation of a portion of excess right-of-way along the west side of State Street, uh, which is described by the legal, legal description in Exhibit A as part of the resolution. Two, determine that the vacation is exempt from the SEQA, pursuant to SEQA guidelines, and the Environmental Assessment Officer is directed to sign in and file a notice of exemption with a Tulare County clerk. Three, determine that a portion... Three, determine that a portion of the right-of-way is being vacated is unnecessary for present and prospective public use and is in the public interest. Four, approve the resolution to vacate the right-of-way, subject to reserving a public utility easement. And five, direct the clerk of the board to cause a certified copy of the resolution to be recorded in the office of the Tulare County Assessor Clerk Recorder. And that concludes the overview. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions? Supervisor Sheeda.
Question I have is, why didn't we vacate the right-of-way along that whole Block 38 one time instead of having a jog in the right-of-way?
This was part of the petition, so it was, no other request was made.
Do you have to request a vacation or can the county vacate? Because they've vacated right-of-ways before without consent of landowners.
Right, we're, that's not...
Supervisor Sheeda Britt Fussell, Assistant Director with Public Works. Yes, the county could undertake a vacation if we're hearing from the board that you'd like for us to take a look at that. We'd be happy to add it to our work plan.
Well, to me, it gets confusing. It's traffic. If you have a piece sticking out, why, why don't I just vacate that whole block?
Sure. We, we can't do it in today's meeting because it wasn't published, obviously, but we'll take a look at that. And you're correct Supervisor, in that throughout the county and Goshen's a perfect example where there was a comprehensive vacation that was done, I think, back in the 60s or even earlier where all the 80-foot right-of-ways were generally reversed, reduced to 60-foot. And unnecessary alleys were also abandoned at that time.
But I agree with what Supervisor Sheeda is saying, although we don't want to hold up this process by any means. So, it'd be in the future.
Right. That's, that's what I was going to suggest as well, so.
Improvements along that line? Right now I see dirt, cars parked in dirt, curb gutter, sidewalk, part of the improvement plan?
Yes, they're, they're waiting on this action to proceed.
Great, okay. No other questions, public hearing. Those wishing to address this item, please step forward, state your name and address for the record.
Hi, Kent Rodriguez, 2090, West McGill Avenue, Fresno, California. I'm the architect for United Health Centers and we'd like to thank staff for bringing this before you. We agree with the vacating that section of the right-of-way. United Health Center provides medical services to the outline communities. Their clientele is growing constantly and currently they have no onsite parking. They acquired the slots so they could put parking there to serve their clients. And to answer your question, the plans are completed. They will provide curb gutter sidewalk and paved parking area in that area and improve this property. And it's ready to go as soon as it gets approved.
Great, thank you.
Right, thank you.
And what else wishing to address the board on this item? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the board.
Mr. Chair, I would just say that I think this is, makes a lot of sense and would definitely improve the delivery of services to the residents of Early Mart. So, with that, I would move for approval of the item.
Second.
Motion by Vanderpool, seconded by Ennis. Please cast your votes. Vote is unanimous. Thank you. We'll now move to item number seven, which I think you're probably going to stay right there. Request for vacation, Washington Street in Early Mart.
Mr. Chairman, board members, CAO, County Council, my name is Mike Bond. I'm with RMA Public Works Branch, Development Services Division. The matter before you is the public hearing to abandon and vacate a portion of excess right-of-way of Washington Street in Early Mart. I'll provide a brief overview, answer any questions before your board will conduct the public hearing. Vacation was requested by petition. Sonia Marie Simmons is the owner of Lots 214 and 215 where the Early Mart swap meet is located. Portion of the right-of-way to be vacated is the south 10 feet of Washington Street along the frontage of Lot 214 and 15. A 10-foot strip is 877 feet in length and is shown in, by the crosshatch area on Attachment Washington Street was originally an 80-foot wide right-of-way but has been reduced to 60 feet wide through much of its length by various parcel maps and subdivision maps. A 60-foot wide right-of-way is sufficient for current and future needs. The vacation will not affect traffic and will not affect access on Washington Street. A public utilities easement will be reserved in the existing right-of-way for existing and future public utilities. Proposed vacation is not in conflict with Tulare County General Plan. The proceedings were undertaken pursuant to Streets and Highway Code Section 8300 and following sections. Petition was filed pursuant to Section 8321. Public notice was published and posted pursuant to Sections 8322 and 8323. The vacation is in conformity with the general plan pursuant to Section 8313 and the public hearing is being conducted pursuant to Section 8324. As stated in the agenda item, the request is that your board, one, conduct a public hearing to consider the vacation of a portion of excess right-of-way along the south side of Washington Street, which is described by the legal description in Exhibit A as part of the resolution. Two, determine that the vacation is exempt from SEQA pursuant to SEQA guidelines and the environmental assessment officer is directed to sign and file a notice of exemption with the Tulare County Clerk. Three, determine that the portion of the right-of-way being vacated is unnecessary for present and prospective public use and is in the public interest. Four, approve the resolution to vacate the right-of-ways, subject to reserving a public utility easement. And five, direct the clerk of the board, cause a certified copy of the resolution to be recorded in the office of the Tulare County Assessor Clerk Recorder. And that concludes the presentation. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, Mr. Worley?
Mr. Bond, I, I do have a question. I'm looking at the photograph that's on, the first photograph or the picture that's on our, our handout. Am I looking at correctly? Is the sidewalk actually in the county right-of-way currently? And it looks like maybe that's not, that's not the part that's actually being vacated. Am I, am I looking at it correctly?
Correct. The poles should be in, in the location of the, of the right-of-way.
The poles are in the right-of-way and so we have a sidewalk, it looks like, and curb and gutter, which run into the street. And, and it looks like we're going to be vacating that portion of the road to, to the adjoining property owner, which I, I have no problem with. I'm just, I'm just curious. That's kind of an odd situation where we have these improvements in the middle of our, in the, in the street. I don't know if that's being vacated or if that's a portion of it that, I guess it wouldn't be. I don't know. I can't really tell by looking at this photograph, but it's kind of an odd situation. Is that, am I looking at it correctly?
It shouldn't interfere with any of the improvements that are there.
Is the, is the person that's asking, requesting the vacation of the right-of-way looking to make improvements on their property or are they just looking to pick up additional real estate?
Additional real estate, not aware of any plans for that strip.
We, we, we already have, there already are these improvements that are existing in our, in our county right-of-way, which is not being lost. Okay, very good. Thank you. It's an odd situation.
Any other questions? Okay, it's a public hearing. Anyone wishing to address the board on this item, please step forward, state your name and address for the record.
Jim Winton, business address is 150 West Morton in Porterville. I'm here in behalf of Sonia Simons. Actually, a few months ago, we made an amendment, or there was amendment approved for her use permit for improvements, which included the addition of about, I don't know, 65 or 70 parking spaces. The entire site now has been, had additions and improvements made to it with the exception of the Washington frontage, again awaiting this abandonment. The fence or the poles that you saw are on what will be the right-of-way line after the abandonment and she was reluctant to install the new fencing along the Washington frontage in the county's right-of-way. It would, it should be on the right-of-way line. So, the portion that's being abandoned is actually behind the fence that's there now. The improvements for Washington are installed at the location that would be normal for a 60-foot right-of-way. So, it's improved for 60 feet. There's just an 80-foot right-of-way there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Anyone else like to address the board on this issue? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the board for action.
Mr. Chair, I'd move for approval of this item.
Second.
Moved by Vanderpool, seconded by Worley. Please cast your votes. It's unanimous. Thank you. We'll now move on to item number eight. Public hearing request from RMA to review a state development, or a state Department of Housing and Community Development application. Mr. Spata.
Yes, good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, CAO, Council, Mike Spata, RMA. The matter before you today, Mr. Chairman, is to hold a public hearing with regard to proposed applications pursuant to the state CDVG grant program and also to consider approving the project consideration list for potential funding sources, which is attached as Exhibit A or as Attachment A to your agenda item. In terms of background, late last year, a notice of funding availability was issued by the state approximating $28 million. The Tulare County would be eligible to apply for up to $2 billion in a number of CDVG grants. There are four potential applications. Today, your board is not being asked to approve those applications, but just to start the background work that's necessary and we would be returning to your board in April to consider approval of those applications and forwarding on to the, to the state. This, there are four proposed items for your consideration today. This is a function of the Economic Development Office, working very closely with grants to try to identify candidate applications that would be very helpful and productive for Tulare County. There are four. Number one, in terms of public improvement activities, and there is a proposed, proposal to apply for approximately $1.5 million to expand the Traver wastewater treatment plant capacity. Number two, in terms of housing assistance and housing rehab, an application is being considered for funding between $200,000 and $300,000 to fund an estimated 40 to 70 lateral sewer connections to hook residential homes in the community of London. And the application would contemplate working with the London Community Services District. Next, there is a planning study in the range of $50,000 to $100,000 dealing with a proposed study to analyze zoning changes that would be necessary for disadvantaged communities. As your board knows, as a result of your recent improvement of the general plan update, there is a lot of implementation work that needs to get done. First and foremost is community plan updating. And with your recent action today, we have now initiated five community plan updates. So, at the planning level, RMA has taken a very aggressive approach with regard to implementing the general plan. A companion to the community planning is to address the zoning ordinance. And what this study will do is analyze in a very focused and targeted way those aspects of the zoning ordinance that are necessary to help both economic development as well as housing development in disadvantaged communities become a reality. Now, it's very important to note, as a result of a recent reorganization and new assignments with regard to project management, these planning studies that we are, are going to undertake are intended to, to the extent feasible, to produce immediate value to the county. How will we do so through this study, for example? In conjunction with the community plan update and this zoning study, we would be taking a very hard look as to how to make that targeted conversion, urban development boundaries of these communities to maximize by right zoning as much as possible and remove the discretionary permit process, which would then accelerate not only planning and development approval, but construction approval. And that will be helpful to economic development on the one hand and housing for disadvantaged communities on the other hand. What this would do is we would need general fund support in order to do this, to move this zoning implementation measure forward as, as much as possible. So, what we're doing at the community plan level is the same thing, to try to put as many by right uses within the UDBs and then put the development standards in there. So, it's either a matter of a checklist with no discretionary review or the developer could go right to building permit. So, this is the type of study where we think will produce real value to the county and working in conjunction with our community plan updating process. The next one is similar in the sense that, as you know, it's a state mandate that we update our housing element. We're up for further consideration of our housing element in 2015. This is the kind of seed money that would be useful in order to get those kind of existing conditions, housing survey requirements out of the way so we can accelerate getting the housing element to your board as, as rapidly as possible. So, this is a small list, but it's a function now of trying to take a very targeted and focused approach to grant applications. And I should say this, this is not the full list. There, we will be coming forward this year with recommendations for applications through the Strategic Growth Council, through Caltrans, through TCAG and through other agencies. So, this is just the beginning. When we're all done this fiscal year, probably there will be a number of grants that will focus on areas that are both in terms of economic need as well as housing need. The second aspect is the proposed list of, of projects. This is a dynamic list in the sense that projects can be added to it or taken away from it, but it is a list. It is a starting point. This was circulated to you earlier or, or last year and so any input you have to give us guidance and direction with regarding, regarding this list would be very helpful. And I know we are working very closely with your CAO on this list as well as projects derived from this list so that we can be very responsive to your needs as well as the needs of the community. So, with that, Mr. Chairman, what I would suggest respectfully is that you hold the public hearing to consider these proposed applications, the proposed project consideration list and any other citizen input and then respectfully to approve the project consideration list. Thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Spata? One, one quick question and, you know, there's, on the London one, $4,000 to $5,000 to hook up each lateral is what my calculator tells me. Is, is there money built in there for capacity for the service, community service district as well or is that just the cost of running the pipe from point A to point B, tying into their system?
We could certainly take a look at that, but as it's represented here today, it's only the, the connection.
Great, thank you. Okay, it's a public hearing. Anybody wishing to address this item, please step forward and state your name and address for the record. Going, going, gone. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the board.
Mr. Chairman, move approved? Second.
Moved by Worley, seconded by Ennis. Staff recommendation, cast your vote, it is unanimous. Thank you, Mr. Spata.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Now, move on to item number nine. I think you're going to stand right there, aren't you?
Again, thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, CAO, Council, Mike Spata, RMA. The matter before you is a proposed change of zone, PZ 13-006, for the Woodville Health Terms of a no review, the specific request is a change of zone from 1.3 acres from rural residential, special mobile home overlay, RAM, and general commercial C2 to professional office on two parcels. The applicant is Tulare Community Health Clinic. The owner of the subject property is Tully River Cooperative Dryer, Inc., and the location of the proposed project is Woodville. Here is a vicinity map. You can see the subject site is over here. This is the community of Woodville. The aerial of the subject property is shown before you and this is the site as I'm moving my mouse around the exterior quarters. This is a, a two-parcel site. This is the existing zoning here. This is the proposed site plan where this is the proposed medical clinic, supported by 16 parking spaces. Here are walkways. Terms of general plan consistency, the proposal before you, the change Terms of general plan consistency, the proposal before you, the change of zone, is consistent with Tulare County's general plan in that it will promote smart growth in healthy communities. It will also promote multi-use plan designation. It's within the urban development boundary, and it supports a public activity center, and it represents clearly infill development. In terms of the project timeline, this application was submitted to RMA on December 5, 2013. We rolled through the Planning Commission public hearing on January 8, 2014. The first reading was considered and approved by your board on January 14. And here today is the final reading and approval of the proposed change of zone.
Mr. Spata, can I ask you a question real quick?
Yes, sir.
What took you so long?
I, I agree.
That, that was, that was sarcasm.
I, I agree, and I'm being respectfully saying, this took 53 days. The Terabella Clinic, which was recently approved, took 62. We broke our own record with three. And in meeting with your distinguished CAO yesterday, he said, can you go faster? I go, we'll try, we'll try. But there are legal timelines for public noticing, and that's what holds us back. But in any event, what I do want to say is thank you for all of your support, the CAO's support, your board's support, because with your support and the resources that you make available, we can do this. And in saying that, I would like to express my thanks and acknowledgement to the project manager, which is Chuck Prisbilske, and the project team also included, who are very dedicated, Eric Coyne, Mike Washam, Jason Garcia-Lobue, and, and as always, very importantly to the process, our building official, Dennis Lehman. They were all working together on a concurrent process, not a sequential process. And consequently, as you may hear today from the representatives, they were under a very tight grant timeline, and that timeline should be met because we had an integrated process working, working together. The recommendation is to approve the categorical exemption, find that there is no substantial evidence that the change of zone will have a significant effect on the environment, and that the proposed exemption is consistent with CEQA. Number three, direct the environmental assessment officer to file the notice of determination with the Tulare County Clerk. Adopt the findings of approval as set forth in the Planning Commission resolution that's attached in your packet. Waive the final reading, adopt the amendment to ordinance number 352, and finally, direct the clerk of the board to publish the ordinance and the amended zoning map. Thank you. That concludes my presentation.
Any questions, Mr. Spata? Seeing none, we'll open up the public hearing. Anybody wishing to address the board on this matter, please step forward and state your name and address for the record. We don't recognize this gentleman here without the uniform.
Morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Dal Kleek, a member of the Executive Board for Pro Youth Heart, Viseya. It's my pleasure to come with you this morning. Appreciate Mr. Spata's remarks. I just wanted to share with you our overwhelming support for this clinic to occur here in, in the community of Woodville. Pro Youth Heart has a campus site there. We serve many children and their families. We see that this is going to be very beneficial. This is going to be a step up in the quality of life and the opportunities that this clinic will provide for this part of the county. And we want to thank all the members of RMA. Mr. Spata mentioned several other names. Eric Coyne was somebody that I was working with that was intervening and helping through the process. I know Dr. Garcia from the Woodville School, and members of the Health Clinic. So having said that, we appreciate the time and effort that's gone forth, and want you to know that we appreciate your time and the support that is given in this. Thank you very much.
My name is Douglas Garcia. I live in Porterville, but I work in Woodville. I just wanted to mention that we are supportive of this project. Our school, the number one, is recent our kids miss school is due to medical reasons. Either they have to travel to Porterville, Tulare, sometimes they even go to Mexico. And during the day, it's often we see kids leaving early because they have to go to one appointment, and we see three or four kids going with them. So this is a great thing for us, that we will be able to have the kids in school, right in education. And the other thing I, I think that bears to be mentioned here is we do have a large senior citizen population that has zero access to medical, to any medical facility, even though they might have the money, or they might qualify for Medicare or Medi-Cal, they do not have transportation. Having a medical site on their community, I mean, they could literally walk there. And it, it'd be a win-win for everybody, so we appreciate you taking the time. And I do think that the time they delayed was, we didn't have holiday in between, so I was kind of, but otherwise it probably would have run in 40 days. Thank you.
Good morning. I'm Gracia Lasoto Perez. I'm the CEO for Tulare Community Health Clinic. Been there 10 years. We have five locations currently in the city of Tulare. We're going to have six this year with the Tulare Elementary School. Currently, it's going to be located at Pleasant MLK, and Woodville will be our seventh. We have over 25,000 patients and over 111,000 visits a year, so this Woodville site will help us. Also, in Woodville, we plan to provide dental services, so we will have a dentist in addition to a medical doctor. We will also have a pediatrician, so in terms of medical doctors, family practice, and a pediatrician. We will be sending a fitness instructor into the elementary school. We've been working with Dr. Garcia, and we're very fortunate to have his board president here as well. So that's very nice. And my board vice president, Mr. Gonzalez, is here as well, and our grant writer. But, so we will be providing those services. In addition, we'll have a health educator, who's, will be a nurse to target, target the diabetic population that we have. So we will have a room that will be set up like a kitchen to demonstrations on healthier nutrition. We, in addition, will have a teenage pregnancy prevention grant that we currently do at the high schools at Tulare, and we'll be extending that, working with the HART program to provide that service. And many other services I can't think of right now, but we're, we're working, we're looking forward to working with the school. And if you have any questions, just let me know. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to address the board on this item? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the board.
Mr. Chairman, I would just make a comment real quick. I, I think that this is a, a great testament to staff in the Economic Development Office as well as the Resource Management Agency to move this project forward quickly. So really do commend your efforts and, and the rest of the team, and also commend the Tulare Community Clinic for seeking to improve access to services in disadvantaged communities or underserved communities, and I really do think this is a great project that's going to have a lot of real positive benefits for them.
Comments?
I wanted to disclose that I did make a phone call to the applicant yesterday, and I think that this is a great project for the town of Woodville. There has not been a lot of economic development or any development in this community for, ever since I was in grammar school in Strathmore. So.
Conestoga.
Yeah, it's been a long time. But I, I think the, the service that will be provided is definitely needed in this community, and I would move approval.
I would second that, but I would also like to say it's great to see these facilities being put in our incorporated areas, our small communities. We just put a clinic in Terabella. We're looking at another one for early March. So it's great to see these health facilities going into our small, unincorporated communities where they will need it, and I will second that.
Moved by Ashida, second by Innis. One comment, and we'll call for the vote. And it's unanimous, like to thank our Resource Management Agency Planning Division for how you seem to be working overtime, extra hours, expediting these much-needed projects in the county. I, I don't think I've seen Resource Management Agency, especially the Planning Division, working this well for quite some time, or ever.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If I may just say something, I was just informed by our able Economic Development Manager that following your action today, your favorable action, the building permits are ready to be picked up today.
Make sure we bring a check, I guess. Thank you very much. Okay, we will now move to our untimed items. Item number 41, request for our probation department to spend some extra money, I guess.
At least I'm not here begging for it. So, good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Mr. Rousseau and Ms. Belz Lang. My name is Kristi Meyer, and I am the Chief Probation Officer for the County of Tulare. AB 109 has been a significant challenge, as Chairman Cox alluded to, over the past, basically, two years. During the fiscal year 11/12, the county received about $5,600,000 in realignment funding. In 2012, 2013, that jumped basically to $11,715,000. For 13/14, it went, stayed with the original $11,715,220, plus they had indicated there would be an increase in approximately $2 million above that initial allocation. Not trusting the state of California.
What a shock.
In much of anything, we decided to hold off before we actually saw and realized the $2,168,493 that we had promised, or that they had promised us. So on June 25, the board approved our initial AB 109 budget of $11,715,200. On that date, almost $6 million was allocated to the Sheriff's Department. Another $1 million was allocated to Health and Human Services for inmate healthcare. Probation received $4,700,000, of which we gave a little over $800,000 to the district attorney, the public defender, Health and Human Services to fund an assessment team, as well as to the court for a legal processing clerk. And that legal processing clerk was extremely important with respect to the court's assuming responsibility for parole revocation hearings. It took probation department, the courts, and state parole several months to work out a process for the filing of those parole revocations that was foolproof, and we wanted to have one central point of control for the processing of those cases. The balance of that $3,906,000 went to probation essentially for a myriad of services. So we're back today to request the allocation of the $2,168,493 in addition to actual growth funding that materialized in the amount of $904,277. We are proposing that this total of $3,72,768 be distributed as follows. $2,143,484 to the Sheriff's Department to establish a day reporting center in South County. This is critical, I believe, to the welfare and the well-being. It's a very healthy thing for Tulare County to have individuals in the south portion of our county to have equal access, okay, to day reporting and other treatment services. We're requesting that an additional $567,577 be allocated to the Health and Human Services Agency to offset the increases in inmate healthcare costs to the county of Tulare. We are also requesting something very unusual. This is unusual here in Tulare County, and it's more unusual on a statewide basis. We are requesting that $511,707 be allocated to fund pre-trial court services in this county. This is critical to the ongoing success of AB 109, particularly with respect to jail overcrowding. That particular unit during the period of January 1, 2013, through December 31, 2013, handled 5,050 cases. One full-time judge essentially, or two half-time judges processed those cases from the early case disposition point forward. Eighty-nine percent of those cases were resolved that day at pre-trial, which is incredible in and of itself. Only 102 of those cases were unresolved, which resulted in them being passed up through the judicial system, either to the preliminary courts or to the trial courts. 241 of those cases were referred for recovery court, which is a diversion program that avoids people staying in jail, and another 194 of those individuals were referred to drug court. It results in a huge savings also in transportation, jail bed, district attorney, public defender, as well as probation department costs. The courts, under realignment, really took a hit, while the rest of us received the benefits. And I know that our CCP, our CCP is probably one of the best of the state in that we work together, we are a team, we respect each other's roles, and an equal player in this process is the court system, because without the court, none of us would be able to, to be maintained. We're hoping that they will get some relief from the governor's office and the legislature in future years, but I'm not holding my breath once again, so this could in fact be an ongoing cost for the CCP. Would you like to add anything?
Yes, we have a question.
I, I just, you kind of touched on that last, your last comments, which was, I'm fully supportive of what is proposed here. It obviously makes good economic sense. It makes good sense from the standpoint of judicial system and justice being done. But my concern is, as you just touched on it, which is, we are going above and beyond in doing this. This would normally be the kind of expense borne by the judicial, just judiciary itself. Because of the funding cutbacks that they've had, we're sort of stepping into the, to the mix here to, to provide this. But looking forward, want to make sure that we're positioned in a way that we can be kind of first in, first out. So if additional money does come to the, to the court system, that they would put their money into this program, we would be able to withdraw our, these funds to put them someplace else where they could obviously be used for other purposes. Has that been contemplated?
That is correct. This is not an ongoing commitment on our part. However, again, given the, the current politics in the state of California, I do not know what future impacts there will be on the court. The governor does not appear to approve of, or be fond of, at any level, the administrative office of the courts. So we just don't know. But as a system, the impact of not having pre-trial, which is really the easiest piece for the court to cut, would be significant and, in my opinion, disastrous. Anything?
Keith Douglas, so Sheriff's Office, and we totally concur with the chief, and we met with the courts as this, and we, the CCP was in total agreement. Just from the sheriff's aspect, our, majority of our population is in the North County between the facilities, and to have to transport that population back to the judicial system, both in the South and North County, would be a huge strain on our resources. So we fully support, you know, this endeavor for this fiscal year. We're actively working with the courts to make sure that it is not a continuing funding.
And I also would like to add that this is the first partnership of its kind that I know of in the county, where really, since the migration of the courts to the state level, this is the first time since that has happened that we are really coming together as a, one solid entity, criminal justice.
You know, Supervisor Cox delivered the State of the County address today and really talked about what Tulare County is doing well. The CCP is something we're doing extremely well. All of the member entities of that partnership really do work together, and they're not looking out for just their own department, they're looking out for the entire county and the population they serve. You look at what you're doing, it's not just incarcerating people, it's attempting to help people as well. And I think that that approach is really, really a testament to what you're, what goals you're striving to achieve, and, and really gives you a lot to show for all the efforts that you're making. And I, for one, appreciate it and definitely commend all that you guys do to be good partners and stewards for the county.
Thank you.
Any questions?
No, I have no questions, but I also thank you for being proactive and looking at the total picture and thinking outside the box on this situation. Great job in collaborating with everybody.
Thank you.
Motion to approve?
I, I do have a question. The $2 million, is that for bricks and mortar? For our D, for DRC?
No, sir. With the AB 19, AB 900 project, South County Detention Facility, we're going to incorporate some elements into that, but we're actually working with the county to lease space. It's most cost-effective to do that while this is a temporary facility until we get the South County established.
So part of the, the funding would go to lease the space where they would report to?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And I'm not super happy we're giving the state money back. The state give it, the state take it. The state give it, the state take it away, and then we give it more. But, you know, I agree with Supervisor Vanderpoel that, you know, you've come together as a team, and the team has decided what's best overall for the county, and I'll, and I'll support that. But I'm not happy that we're giving a half a million dollars back to the state.
Motion to approve, Chairman.
Motion by Worthley. Second. Second by Ennis. Cast your vote. Is unanimous? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We'll now move to item number 42, the presentation by Central California Emergency Medical Services Agency. We've been looking forward to this.
I hope I meet your expectations.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Board members. My name is Dan Lynch. I'm the EMS Director for the Central California EMS Agency. I want to make sure I introduce Dale Dotson, who works for me as the EMS Coordinator here for Tulare County. I always forget him, and he reminds me each time we come here, so there I have nothing to worry about. I really want to talk about the, the current status of the EMS system, you know, but I kind of have to give a real brief history. Back in March of 2009, this board approved some pretty aggressive agreements and basically approved an EMS system to go in, to be implemented at that time. And we kind of look at it as a new system because it had so many positive changes, or big changes in it. It had strict response time performance standards that didn't exist. It ensured the closest ambulance responded to an emergency event regardless of what agency it was. It provided an EMS system safety net so that if an ambulance company went out of business, that there would be uninterrupted ambulance services in, in any place in the county. And it included some fines and penalty structure to make sure that if performance wasn't met, that there was some type of feedback, if you would. It's time for renewal of these contracts. It's been five years already, and in some aspects, for me, it's like, gosh, it's only been five years. But it's, time's flying, and, and it's, it's only been five years. And it, the proposed amendments to extend the ambulance provider agreements are, are in front of you today to extend this, the agreements to June 30th of 2019. It's almost hard for me to say 2019. I don't know where the time is going. But the Tulare County system continues to grow. You know, we, we've come a long ways. We, we have paramedic ambulance services throughout this, this county. We have paramedic first responders in a couple of our larger cities. There's centralized ambulance dispatch. The closest ambulance responds, like I said, regardless of agency. There's performance-based contracts. We have a designated cardiac care center with Quea Delta Medical Center, which means people with heart attacks go directly to this facility because it has invasive cath labs. And it has, we have simultaneous helicopter dispatch throughout the county. A designated Level III trauma center is now here through Quea Delta Medical Center. And we have this countywide ambulance safety net, like I mentioned, where if an ambulance company, for example, Three Rivers Ambulance in 2010 had gone out of business, and the remaining ambulance providers provided the, the coverage and filled in, and there's been no interruption of ambulance services. In fact, ambulance services have improved. The EMS system continues to grow. Some of the exciting stuff that's happening here, and I, and I think this stuff happens mainly because it is a strong EMS system that, that people are willing to invest in. And Skylife Helicopter moved its operations to the Visalia Airport. This is a huge thing because this is an EMS helicopter that is dispatched with an ambulance into the rural areas of our, of our county on very critical incidents, like motor vehicle accidents, shootings, and stabbings, and those types of events. And they transport these critical trauma to trauma centers, whether it be Quea Delta or Regional Medical Center in Fresno. And so, Skylife Helicopters is, has been here, and they've been here a little, I guess a little over a year now. So, it's, it's been a, a big change. One of the other big changes is a helicopter landing pad that was installed over at Quea Delta Medical Center. This is exciting for two reasons. For the patients that can be transported directly to Quea Delta Medical Center by helicopter, but also for patients who are critical that need to be transferred out of Quea Delta Medical Center. We realize that specialty care services in the valley is becoming very limited in many respects, but there are many patient conditions that our local hospital or trauma center can't handle, like neurotypes, neurosurgical-type things, and other medical problems that, that need to go to other facilities, maybe in the Bay Area or into, into the south, Southern California. The ability to immediately dispatch a helicopter to land at the facility, load and go to those facilities saves a, a critical amount of time for those patients. So, it's, it has really been a, a great addition to that, to that facility, and has helped medical patients, emergency medical patients in this county, a, a great deal. So far, since it's been put in, we've seen about 50, 50 patients transported to the trauma center by helicopter, and, and about 100 patients transported out of that facility to various facilities in the state. So, it's, it's, it's a big deal, thinking that in prior years, they had to pick up a, pick up a patient, transport him to the airport, transfer him again, and, and that's, that's a lot of time, time to do. One other thing that I really want to thank the IT folks, Will Cushing and his folks, is the expansion of the radio infrastructure for the, for the EMS portion. It, it really mimics the, 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 the growth or what they've installed or implemented for the radio infrastructure, almost duplicates what, not duplicates, but mimics what fire service has. So, in the past, ambulances would be dispatched to certain areas of the county and have no communications because they'd be out of radio contact range. So, they'd go out into the abyss, and then dispatch would wait for them to make contact, or they can make contact through another agency that way. And so, now with this change over this past year, there's not too many places of the county where an ambulance can't, or where we lose contact with, with an ambulance. This is, this is a, a good safety feature for our ambulance crews, and, and it's, and it's been a big change, so we want to thank, thank the folks for that. There's an addition of a critical care transport unit in our community. Mobile Life Support, one of our local ambulance providers, has added a critical care transport unit to the, to the system. What that allows is ground transport of patients, critical patients, from one hospital to another. And, and the reason that's important, or what, what the difference is why another, regular ambulance can't do it, is sometimes there are treatments or procedures or medications that are being provided to a patient that are outside the scope of a paramedic. In the past, what we've done throughout all of our counties, if we didn't have this type of service available to us, they'd either have to decrease the, the level of care being provided to the patient so that it met the scope of practice for a paramedic and then transport, or they'd have to take a nurse out of the hospital, put it in the ambulance to do the transport, which takes that resource out of the hospital that's, that's badly needed. So, so this has been a, a good change for the system as they're getting used to it. It's been here for probably a year or so. It's staffed, staffed with a nurse, and that, and it saves a lot of resource and time. The other thing is a disaster medical support unit. The state, this is a state asset that has been placed in Tulare County. As, as part of OES Region 5, which is the seven counties between Kern, Miraposa, and Merced, we have three of these vehicles in, in this area. Kern County and Fresno County got theirs a few years ago, and Tulare County got theirs last year, as we went after this, this asset, because we think it's very important. What the purpose of this vehicle is, it's, it's, it's a formal purpose, is to lead a strike team of five ambulances to a disaster somewhere in the state, region or state. The idea, concept is that it carries enough pre-hospital supplies inside that vehicle to support those five ambulances as they go, and, and go to a disaster. The, the benefit that we get for it being in Tulare County is, we get to use it in Tulare County for normal incidents. So, if we have that bus accident, like we had a bus accident in the southern part of the county here a few weeks ago with 30 patients, this is, if, if it were needed, they were all minor patients, but if that was a more critical incident, this unit would be dispatched. It has backboards, trauma supplies, and other pre-hospital equipment that could be used locally as part of our normal response system. And so, we're very happy to have that in, in the, in the county. This is a, and it's, it's maintained by the ambulance providers. This is something that the county is not, not maintaining. This is something that we were able to work with the state on to have the ambulance providers support and take care of, so that it's not something that, something else that the county has to, to watch over. I wanted to focus on TCAD as part of this discussion, because TCAD has really enhanced its technology. TCAD, which stands for the Tulare County Consolidated Ambulance Dispatch Center, is the centralized ambulance dispatch center for Tulare County. It's, it's pretty much owned and operated by the ambulance providers, and it provides the system-wide dispatch throughout all of Tulare County. So, all your medical 911 calls come in through to this dispatch center, and they provide medical pre-arrivals and, and, and that type of thing. But it is really state-of-the-art. With the, the help of some of our Homeland Security dollars and other money that the, that the ambulance providers have really invested into this, the technology and the capabilities of this communication center have really grown. So, the, not just with GPS, but in-vehicle mobile data terminals, if you will, to share information and to get everybody to the, to the right place, it's, it's pretty, pretty amazing. If you haven't had a chance to see the Tulare County Consolidated Ambulance Dispatch Center, you, you should see if you could do that. Because of how well they've been doing, the city of Tulare actually joined them over a year ago for them to start dispatching their, their fire department. So, they're dispatching EMS as well as, as fire service in, in the city of Tulare. And they share this technology with their first responder agencies, so they, they really do outreach to like Porterville and the other cities in Visalia and folks to say, we could share this technology so that you know where the ambulances are, and we can, we can share that information so that there's, there's just total openness on that. That is a blank screen, but, you know, you know, we, we can't do this without the Tulare County ambulance providers, and we really have a, a really good relationship with all of them. They, they really are committed to this county. And that's American Ambulance of Visalia, California Hot Springs, Camp Nelson Ambulance, Exeter District Ambulance, Imperial Ambulance, Life Star, Mobile Life Support, and Dinuba City Fire. Those are your ambulance providers, and also some of them are here. If you're here, stand up if you're right from one of these ambulance companies. Thank you. They, they, they're, they're the ones that commit the, what they've done to, to be able to provide the services to this, to this county. This past year, in 2013, they responded to about 34,300 calls throughout the, the county. They transported about 26,400 people to the, to hospitals. The helicopter itself responded to 300, or transported 320 patients in 2013. The, I think the most remarkable thing about the ambulance providers is that they meet their response time standards 98.2% of the time. And we know it's 98.2% of the time because we watch it very closely. And I got to say, out of the four counties that we're, that we're responsible for, this far and away is one of the, is the highest performing county we have. And, and I hate to say that, because, you know, it's, you know, Tulare was the last to come into the system, and they're doing the best. So, it makes me feel like I'm not doing enough in the other three counties. But, but they are doing extraordinarily well, and, and they're to, to be commended because they do, they do extremely well. I think one of the biggest things that, that, that we've all overcome in this county is that the closest ambulance always goes on the emergency event. We don't have a rotation system like we used to, or whatever the situation was, but the closest ambulance responds regardless of agency, and I know that that makes a huge difference. That, that is incredibly a, a big, a big thing. You know, before, I, I tell you, there, there's one thing I wanted to say, that they are working with challenges. You know, the state does stick its finger in some of these things that they try to do in regards to just providing services. But unfortunately, for, for an ambulance company, about 70% of their business, the patients they transport, I should say, have some, they're, the payment from, or the insurance, if I want to call it insurance, that these patients have, about 70% of them are government-type insurances, whether it be Medi-Cal or Medicare. So, back in November, the state implemented a 10% cut across the board for Medi-Cal, Medi-Cal patients. And these, that's, it's a big thing, since Medi-Cal doesn't even pay its, the, what Medi-Cal pays doesn't even cover the cost to provide the service as it is, and then they took a 10% cut from this. And in the state's way, they also made it retroactive two years. So, what is happening to the ambulance providers is that they have taken a 10% cut, and they're also paying the state back for two years of, of, of that. So, they're dealing with some of their own things right now with some of that. They took a 2% cut during the sequester, they're, and, and they don't know right now where, where the Affordable Care Act fits in with them in regards to some of their reimbursement. And in the ambulance world, you get paid when you transport. And so, we're working with the ambulance communities to see how we go about reducing transports to emergency departments, and that, it means we're dealing with the state in regards to how to reimburse them for not going to emergency departments, which is the most expensive healthcare there is. But those are the challenges the ambulances are dealing with. But I'm here to tell you, as the Director of EMS here, is that Tulare County EMS is working. The EMS system is strong, and the EMS system is definitely saving lives. I appreciate that. If you have any questions, I'm here to answer.
Questions? Quasworthley.
Well, Chairman, I just wanted to say that this was a great success story. I remember when Dan was here, and there was a recommendation that we go to a single provider system, and the, the best thing this board ever did was get out of the way and allow the, the owners of the, and the various agencies to work together to come up with a solution, which they have done. And as you point out, par excellence, they've done it extremely well. And the benefit, of course, is to all the, all Tulare County. So, my thanks to the providers for the service they provide to Tulare County. I certainly support the extension of the five-year contract, and I, I recognize they're operating in some very difficult circumstances financially. Hopefully, those things will get worked out in a way that doesn't kill the goose that lays the golden egg. But thank you for your presentation, and it's, it's been a, a really rewarding thing for me as a supervisor, to be on board and watch these things take, take place under our watch, and it's been great.
Anything else?
Just like to say a few, it's hard to believe it's been five years. You know, it was contacted early on by Imperial. They'd been in the Porterville area for years and years and done a great job, and I was just glad that we could get this thing put together, and so, we didn't lose anybody, and so, doing a great job. I don't hear very many complaints at all on our ambulance services throughout the county. Thank you for a great job.
I remember when I was the chairman, and this issue came up. It really wasn't vetted through the Board of Supervisors. It was done through Human Health Services. And when we found out as a board, we decided to go forward and let the existing ambulance providers see if they could work out a system. And Supervisor Worthley and Ennis and all of us believe you've done, exceeded our expectations. The expectations by some was that you were going to fail, and you far exceeded, I mean, people who thought that, I don't think they even want to talk about how successful we've been with the, the service. The conversation of reimbursement came up in our rural county supervisors meeting with the Speaker of the Assembly, and they're going to go back and look at reimbursement, increasing the reimbursement rates for Medi-Cal. I think it's extremely important, not only for the ambulance service, but any medical provider, is that we cannot exist, you cannot exist, on the reimbursement rates that are currently being provided by the state. So, hopefully, we'll see some movement to increase the reimbursement. So hopefully we'll see some movement, uh, to increase the reimbursement rate. But overall, thank you very much for all the providers for doing an excellent job.
Buzz, Vanderpool?
You know, one, one quick thing, uh, I, I think the number ninety-eight point two percent really says it all right there. I, I, there are tremendous accolades for achieving that. I think that, uh, it's great to see Tulare County be the best of your four counties that you represent because we are the best county in, you know, out of any four counties you can pick in the state. But, um, really glad that that service level is being provided to our residents. It's really about service, it's really about saving lives and you definitely are doing that. And really improving services along the way. Not only are you reaching that ninety-eight point two percent, but the, the helicopter, the, uh, emergency response vehicle, all these different things are just going to add to what can be done for, uh, patients who have an incident in Tulare County. And, uh, being a person that's been transported in, from hospital to hospital before, um, it's very, very important to have the fastest means of getting, uh, to that final destination. And I think you're really improving that service and doing that for Tulare County residents. So really do, uh, hats off to you and commend you.
Probably the only way you get there faster is if you rode with Supervisor Ennis.
Mr. Russo, yes, comments?
Dan, good presentation. I'm glad you're here. Uh, it's, it's, uh, very rewarding to hear the, uh, success of the, of the system. I remember years ago when they, you know, we were looking at the fire department and, you know, uh, closing down, uh, fire stations. We had old fleet, we had poorly maintained fire stations. Our ambulance, uh, companies, some did better job than others. There was no mutual aid. Uh, there were a lot of problems in the system. Now see where we're at today, uh, with, with our fire department, with the EMS system, as, as successful it is. This board and the prior board has a lot to be proud of, but certainly public safety is, is, has been enhanced tremendously over the last decade and, and, but I do have a couple of questions, Dan. You know, uh, you had indicated that, that, uh, you're, you're, um, you're dispatching for, uh, the city Tulare for its fire needs. Uh, we as a county are looking for, looking to consolidate our dispatching group and, and we also attempted to reach out to our, uh, Visalia, uh, and, and some of the other cities in the county and we weren't able to get it done. Has, has TCAD approached the other agencies and, and offered or tried to offer to do dispatching for, uh, for the cities, both fire and, and, and/or police?
I would, uh, ask Paul Main from American and Visalia to answer that since he.
Okay. Paul Main, American Ambulance, Visalia, um, twenty seventeen Eastern Noble. TCAD is, is very interested in, in looking at other options. We've approached, uh, several, we're, we're trying to take it slow because we're growing as, as, um, you know, as we have room for right now, but, uh, we're very interested in, in growing TCAD if we need to.
And, and my last question is, um, and, and it's not going to be news to you, is the, is the difference of opinion about whether to have dispatchers doing both fire and public safety calls? You know, you talk to the fire folks, they will, they certainly have a certain perspective on that. They want their own dispatchers that know fire, um, and public safety feels they can do both. I just, I'm curious your opinion on that.
Just depends on, on how you want to set up the system. And, um, we've actually done it both ways within TCAD. And we feel that, um, right now, we're actually working to where, um, there isn't, the EMS side is actually handling the fire side, but there is typically a fire dispatch, uh, radio operator that is available to the system all the time.
In, in my experience, if I could help answer this too, is, you know, in, in Fresno, uh, the Fresno County Health Department actually owns and operates its own communication center, which is a consolidated ambulance and fire dispatch center. So we have, and it dispatches for Fresno Kings and Madera, all the ambulance providers there, and it dispatches for seven fire departments, uh, in Fresno. And, and, uh, what we have found and what the fire departments found was that because the, the fire and EMS are so related because of the, the vast majority of fire responses are to medical calls, that, that it's, it's a no-brainer. It's, uh, it's, it's the same calls, you're dispatching equipment, that type of thing. But certainly there is an element of fire dispatching that is fire dispatching. And just like, uh, Paul has said, is there are fire, designated fire dispatchers that deal with, uh, fire incidents, uh, because it is a, such a, a fluid, uh, incident-type thing if it's a, if it's a large fire. And so, but it's been extremely successful, um, there. And I know that's been successful with, with Tulare City joining them as well, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I, I think the, the questions, the leading questions by your CAO is, is basically if we can combine fire and EMS, what is the savings to the county for not rolling fire trucks out when it actually should be answered by an ambulance? Because over seventy percent of our calls are medical calls and they're not fire calls. Are there any statistics like in Fresno that would, that they've been able to correlate savings by that dispatch system?
No, and, I mean, fire departments, uh, you know, we, we do a priority dispatch system. We know that on priority one calls within a metropolitan area where a lot of your resources are, ambulance resources are. But fire departments respond to priority one calls because those are the life-threatening emergencies right now. Uh, within the metropolitan area, a priority two call, which is still, it may be a red lights and sirens call for an ambulance, but it's not into the area of difficulty breathing, heart attack type thing, but it is an emergency still. The fire department doesn't respond on those calls in, in many areas. And, and I have to state that a, a lot of the fire departments decide what they want to respond on because it is a call volume issue. I mean, um, if they stop responding on medical calls, then they've got to, you know, figure out, you know, what, they gotta be responding on something. They're not going to sit in their station house when something's happening on, when one of their community members is down the street and they need to respond. So, uh, we require our fire departments to respond to priority one calls, um, as a, because of the life-threatening status. Uh, the priority two calls is essentially, um, in the rural areas where response times of an ambulance will be extended and we ask the, the fire departments if they consider responding on those calls so that we're getting somebody there sooner than later. And, uh, most of the fire departments are, are, work real well with us on that, so it's, it, it works. But I do not have specifically any data to say that it's reduced call volume. It's really a department decision on what they want to and what they don't want to respond.
Else? Okay, this is a, is an action item to receive a presentation as well as amend the agreements.
Approval.
Second by Ennis, second by Worthy, cast your vote. Unanimous. Thank you very much. Okay, we'll move to our last untimed item for the day, which is a request from RMA to approve report regarding public work staging area ordinance. Another thing that you can't say three times fast.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board.
It has a printed item for those that didn't get it on the iPad.
CAO and Council.
Ennis and I got it.
This will be a brief report. The matter before you is to consider the approval of a report regarding the public work staging area ordinance. Uh, I'll get right to it. The report essentially recommends that no changes be made to the existing public work staging area ordinance, which is governed by the administrative permit process and is intended for primarily the storage of construction materials and equipment only, not for operations. In addition, it is recommended that no changes be made to your existing zoning ordinance, which govern, um, the activities involving batching, asphalting, concreting and rock crushing and related activities. The special use permit process is associated with those activities and that process is, um, governed by the planning commission and by your board if appealed. The public work staging area ordinance is administrative use permit, which is subject to director approval. As a result of, uh, your board's consideration of this matter, uh, last June, uh, two thousand and thirteen, a fairly extensive public outreach process had occurred at your direction to consider, uh, a review of the public work staging area ordinance and related, uh, construction, uh, preparation activity. And as a result of this process, which was a good process, no changes are being recommended for two primary reasons. First, uh, to go through the expedited process could create some unintended consequences with regard to inequities in the regulatory process, inspection process, the assessment of fees and reclamation. In other words, if we went through the expedited admin process, there would be a differential between those applicants that went through the more extensive and rigorous process required by law. Secondly, inasmuch as it was represented to your board and as stated in the general plan, to get through major freeway projects as well as road projects and is supported by TCAG and Measure R, RMA wants to do its part in trying to expedite those projects. Well, I, I think it's safe to say that as a result of the project management system that's in place in RMA at the present time, that even if it's a more, um, complicated project, we are committed and we envision that we can get those special use permits through the system within six to nine months and on the high side, only if an EIR is required. But we think we've got the process in place to get those road projects through our permitting system without any changes to the zoning ordinance. And again, as detailed in, uh, the staff report, uh, there was a fairly extensive public outreach process. Some excellent comments were made to the point where it led to these recommendations. And I should say that we've received no comments, uh, to this report and definitely no opposition. So in essence, during the past six months, I think it was a fruitful process and we respectfully recommend that you approve this report.
Questions?
Just, just a quick question. I, you know, I'm glad that you went through and, uh, conducted all of the outreach and met with all the different concerned parties. This was a very heated item for a while in terms of outreach to the board about needing, uh, us needing to do something about this. And you had no, uh, no comments up through this process and bringing this report to us. So I'm glad that you've been able to kind of resolve what was, uh, uh, what was once fairly heated amongst these various contractors and service providers, so. So good job and, and kudos, there's obviously no one here, so.
Thank you. As always, your, your board got it right through public communication and public outreach with an opportunity to air views, to provide a perspective. That was done, it was considered and it was resolved. And during the past few months, there was a cooling process, if you will, whereby I'm not aware of any opposition.
Right.
We have a bond to clean up site?
I, I'm.
Do we have a bond in place to clean up the site when they leave?
Not for the administrative use permit process or the special use permit process, but we will take a look at that. That's a good point.
I'm just, you know, just knowing that this one contractor is involved and could be involved in some heavy-duty liquidated damages, that's a concern to me.
We'll take a look at that. Very good.
Okay. Anything else?
Yeah, just a great job, Mike, in spilling out and getting everything put in place.
Entertain a motion then.
Go move.
Second by Ashita, second by Vanderpool, cast your votes. It is unanimous. Thank you, Council. We have need for closed session.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, you do have items A through F. Item B is off agenda and I do anticipate there will be an announcement.
Okay, we'll adjourn to closed session. Thank you. Thank you for the eight. You stuck it out.
Oh. Uh, this is Gene Rousseau, County Administrative Officer, reporting out of closed session on item E to consider the employee appointment, employment for the, for the position of agricultural commissioner, sealer. On a motion by Supervisor Vanderpool, seconded by Supervisor Worthy, uh, the board voted unanimously to reappoint Marilyn Kenashida as the agricultural commissioner, sealer for a four-year term.